Posted and available for families that cannot attend a view and recording is on. Okay. Uh, so as I was saying, first graders meet your teacher is going to be tomorrow starts at four o'clock. It'll end by seven o'clock. Um, iPads workbook, uh, first graders will turn in those forms. Um, there'll be some friendly faces and we're really, really excited to see you guys. So, um, expect that on Tuesday tomorrow. And then Thursday, uh, we have kindergarten and second grade. Meet your teacher and iPad checkout. Couple of things to, to, uh, to make sure that you understand is second graders are going to use the mobile drop off that we have in the morning that is located on the east side of the building, same as first grade. And then the kindergartners are actually going to be on the south side of the building, which is the, the, the Robinson Street entrance. And then, uh, and then, um, the bus loading zone is the space that we're going to use. So the teachers will be out there. So we asked the kindergartners to come through that way. Um, and then the second graders will be on the east side of the building. So again, for second graders, please sure that you guys remember to bring in those required annual forms um, and turn those in when you, when you come to pick up your, your technology and the workbook and supplies. Um, we are working on a backup plan, uh, for inclement weather. We understand that later this week does not look very good. So we are working on a backup plan and when we finalize that plan, we'll make sure that we get that information out. Uh, we're taking a look at a couple of options. Um, and, uh, and so we will, we will make sure that that's communicated based on what the weather looks like. So we're going to hold out a little bit of hope right now and we'll, uh, we'll see what we get like as it gets closer to Thursday. Um, next one was, uh, communication on the pictures. We actually are going to mail out picture packets in the next couple of days. Picture day is, I want to say that date is October 6th. I sent the communication out. Um, it's posted on our website, uh, as well as, uh, you've got a communication through parent square. Um, so please look for that. That'll be a, a mobile pickup or our mobile kind of picture day. We'll have a couple of stations set up, so, uh, definitely looking forward to seeing you guys. And it'll be by grade level and then there will be kind of an open time based on, uh, family availability. If, uh, parents have to work and they need to need any time, uh, there will always be the option to come and get your picture taken. So look for those picture packets to come in the mail, um, either later this week or by early next week. Okay? Let's see, um, any questions? Kind of, I mean, we had a kind of, kind of a week off there with a lot going on, a lot of difficult times for a number of families. Are there any questions or maybe anything specific that families would like information about?
Um, I have a question.
Yes, Audrey, let me hear it.
Um, how is library going to go? How are we going to do library?
I, I love it. You're, you're not going to let me, uh, get past that, are you? You hit me with that last time, didn't you?
Yeah.
So I, Audrey, to be perfectly honest with you, I don't have a very detailed answer to give you right now. So what we're going to do with libraries, we're going to wait and see how the school year starts. So the first couple of weeks, we'll wait and see how the school year starts. And then after those first couple of weeks, our librarian is going to work with our classroom teachers and we'll come up with a plan, um, that you'll probably hear through your classroom teacher, how that plan is going to go so that you can check out library books. So we'll make sure that there's some resources, obviously our library as well as maybe the library, um, services downtown. There's a lot of information going out on the internet. So trying to, you know, not actually physically have a book in hand, but be able to read books on your iPad or on another electronic device. So we're going to try to have a number of options for everybody so that we can get some good books and some good stories in your hands. Okay? So, so two weeks after we get, we should have a plan and have some information on the library. Okay, Audrey?
Okay.
That's a fantastic question sweetheart. Thank you so much for asking. Um, let me double check the chat here. Oh, thank you. We've got a question on class schedules. So I actually was, I have to admit, I was having a ton of difficulty. Our website went down for a little bit, but we actually do have class schedules. Um, I, let's see. I'm going to, let me try to, let me try to do something here. Let me try to open up. I have a, a list version that is on the Mark Twain Elementary School website. It's categorized out by class. So it's a kindergarten post and then a first grade post and the second grade post with specifics times that you can read, um, how the class schedule goes. But I also have a little bit more visual friendly one that I'm kind of trying to pull up as I'm talking to you. Um, so give me a second here. Let me see if I can pull that up and share my screen. There it is. Okay. So let me see if I can share my screen. Present. My entire screen. All right. Let me get this document and open this thing up. All right. If, if you cannot this screen, if you can't see this screen, can you give me a little shout out? I'm assuming everybody can share my screen. The silence will tell me that you can see my screen. Okay, so you can kind of see I've got this in three columns. We've got kindergarten column, first grade column and second grade column. To start off, the green chunks there, the green block is a 15 minute block of time. It's going to start off the beginning of the day about eight fifteen. And that is going to be a live morning meeting. So basically our class meetings and a social emotional learning lesson that will transition with the same meeting into, uh, English language arts or reading. And the teachers are going to present and kind of walk the students through the lesson and what to expect when they log on to their, uh, curriculum. Again, these are 15 minute chunks of time. And then that's going to go into starting at eight forty-five, some independent applied learning time. So basically the students then are going to be turned loose for a forty-five minute section of time. We kicked around a number of ideas with the time specifically. We had thirty minutes in there. We had an hour in there. We don't want it to be so short that getting used to being online, we simply run out of time and we're rushed to the next. Should be on the counter. So when we run out of time and simply run into the next, uh, live session. And so we figured forty-five minutes is a good starting point. What we do want all parents to know is that this schedule, based on how the students respond, if they need a little bit more time to be with the teacher, we're going to expand those live times. If they're, if they're working for people, then we're going to leave them the same. If they need more independent time, if forty-five minutes, you know, goes by way too fast, they need more time, then we're going to add a little bit more time to that and stretch out that independent time. If it's too much time, then we'll shrink it up. So we're really looking for feedback from the teachers as to how the students are responding to that. And then we're going to, we're going to try to make sure we make adjustments as we go. So that pink block there, independent time, uh, teacher office hours. And so there'll be ways for students to ask questions and communicate through the, through the, uh, canvas platform. We're going to have a little break in here. So this purple block is just a brain break. There will be some asynchronous or basically like some videos or some activities that are shared, uh, that could be PE activities or basically we just want the students to get up and move around a little bit. All right. See ya. Drive safe, please. Sorry about that. My son's, my, oh. Thank you. Sorry about that folks. And then, um, after the brain break and kind of get up and move around, they're going to transition into math. So kind of the same format, starting with a fifteen minute block of time. If it goes a little bit longer, it does into some independent time. Lunch ten forty-five for about thirty minutes. And then at the bottom down here, let me scroll up here. Let me blow that up just a little bit. If you're on a smaller device. At the bottom here, these are just options. And again, this is independent, everything from independent time to specific services. So you can see there's, uh, additional independent applied learning time. PE activities that can be live, they can be recorded or they can just be applied activities that are shared. Um, I misspelled activities, might need to clean that up. ELD students are going to have some time with their teacher. Interventions for students that are having challenges with the curriculum. Um, we will also have some extension opportunities. I think that was in the schedule that I, uh, posted on our website. Special ed services can be delivered during this time. We will also have kit den, which is our, our self-regulation, uh, and guidance intervention. And then as well as office hours and just time to connect with teachers or a teaching assistant. So for example, we may, as, as we get going, we may see time that we need to connect with the students again. And so we may, whether it's an intervention or extension, we may have a teaching assistant that is assigned like three or four students and they get on with that, with that group in, uh, in a setup Google meeting and they run a small group instruction. Um, but lots of options there. And again, it all depends on the needs of the students at that time. So the bottom half of the day is actually carbon copy all the way across. But when we transition over here to first grade, you can see that because we've staggered, the goal being when we stagger those times, we don't have any grade level that is on live at the same time. So for some of you households that are sharing students, maybe you've got a couple of families coming together and they're at different grade levels. If they're kindergartners, they're all beyond the same time. And then first graders would all be on the same time. We're not trying to double anything up so that multiple grade levels are on at the same time. That opens up some time at the beginning of the day. Again, there's about thirty minutes for first graders that is independent applied time or some of the options from that blue box at the bottom. They go into their morning meeting for a fifteen minute block of time. Live synchronous time again is going to be continued and it's going to transition into presenting the English language arts lesson. Independent applied time and teacher office hours to work on that English language arts lesson. A brain break or a PE activity for the students. And then transitioning into, uh, a live math session with the teacher. Independent time and then into that blue zone where there's options. And then second grade just has a little bit more time at the front end because they're waiting for their time to get on with the teacher. So their live time, their morning meeting doesn't start until about nine fifteen. And then if you take a look at the end of the day, they just have, they have time, open time at the beginning of the day and then just a little bit, a little bit less, uh, in terms of time at the tail end of the day. The only difference in this schedule is that on Mondays, Mondays, there is a time that's dedicated for professional development for the teachers. Uh, professional learning theater time for them to collaborate as a grade level. And then also time to really understand how the students are responding and making sure that paid attention to the progress or lack thereof, whether it's accelerated or maybe a little bit behind grade level or what we would categorize as typical progress. And, uh, making sure that we have a plan for the beginning of the week. Teachers will be available on Mondays, but it'll be available to, you know, basically how you would communicate through your canvas portal. You can send an email. You can use the system to communicate and ask questions. If you get stuck, there are help, uh, there's a help tab within your, within your child's, um, canvas platform. And, uh, and, and ways to make sure that you can communicate with us if, if, uh, if you need any help whatsoever. Mondays, once we get going, not at the beginning, but Mondays, once we get going are also going to be times where, um, you're going to see a lot of these activities that I had addressed in the blue section. So for example, special ed students receiving services may get some of those services on a Monday. Interventions will probably meet on Monday. So live time will happen on Monday. It just may not be with the classroom teacher. Some teachers may get on just to touch base with students. If there are some, some concerns or something that they feel like they need to connect with the student, they may schedule a time to connect with the student or that's students learning coach. Okay. So lots of, lots of different things that may happen. It just may not be, uh, with the classroom teacher on that Monday. Okay? Let's, um, is there any questions on the schedule? I know everybody has been, uh, dying to, uh, dying to hear that Penny, Penny White specifically needs to know what the schedule is. So I'm happy to be able to provide that for her. Um, but, uh, any, any questions on schedule? I know that's been waiting, waiting quite a bit. Happy you can type those in. You can unmute and ask.
Is, um, is the Fox online schedule the same as that, that one? Like, is that like, everybody's on that same schedule?
Yeah. So to clarify that question, thank you Heidi. So to clarify on the difference between Fox online and Fox hybrid. On Fox online means they're online the entire school year. They may not be a teacher that's Mark Twain. So for example, if you're in kindergarten and you can't find Fox on, or Fox online, that, that teacher is not a Mark Twain teacher. Um, and they may have a similar schedule, but it not be the same as what you see. So that schedule may look a little bit different based on the number of students in there. In fact, in some of those online classes, the teacher is, uh, is also basically a case manager. And they can have anywhere from thirty to maybe fifty or sixty on those higher grades, students that are online that they're managing. So, uh, that schedule may look different. The hybrid schedule right now, if, if you're in hybrid in terms of what you chose, because we are not allowed to bring students into the school, hybrid just means that for the time being, we're, we're also online. We're just using a very structured schedule like what I showed you. Okay. Does that answer your question Heidi?
Yep, thanks.
You're welcome. Um, let's see.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Hi, um, so forgive me if you've already answered this in previous meetings because I'm, I try to keep up and do my best. But, um, I, so the meeting, the live schedule where they have sessions where they're learning. I work at home and my husband works outside of the home. What if for some reason he misses a session? Cause, uh, you know, I'm thinking like, what if I'm on the phone and, or I'm stuck in a meeting and I can't help him get logged on, you know, to the meeting time? Is there a way where he can see that later or how do we do that?
So I think there's a number of options there. Um, number one, uh, I, I believe we have the capability to record some of these, uh, you know, kind of live time. The thing on the live session and it's going to be a work in progress. We, we've never done it yet, so it's going to be a work in progress. But the thing on the live sessions is the teacher is really going to be talking to the kids and kind of setting up or teeing up the lesson. When the kids get into the curriculum, they are going to be given instruction that is kind of pre-recorded. And so it'll be a very interactive recording of the lesson to teach them what the skill is for that day. And then there's going to be some practice time either in their workbook when they go to the applied or there's some activities that they can do actually online. So, so, uh, the teachers, and, and this is going to be kind of a wait and see what it looks like, but the teachers are really not going to be spending a lot of time live online with the whole class, teaching a lesson. They're basically going to make sure that the students understand where they're supposed to go to pay attention to the, the video that, that they're going to watch or the, the way the curriculum is going to be set up. And they're basically just kind of prepping the lesson. Um, if that, if that kind of helps clarify a little bit. If you have challenges, everything from communicating directly through the canvas platform to calling our school and letting us know what is going on. Um, we, we will try to troubleshoot that with you. We want to make sure that ahead of time, everybody has the ability to get online. Um, and so if we're having difficulty with that, there will be some resources for you to get some, get a response or get a problem solved as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Yeah. Uh, let's see, I'm, I'm falling behind in the chat room here just a little bit. Let's see. Okay, yep. Okay. So first day of school. First day of school is, is going to be next Monday. But that Monday is basically going to be similar to for you first and second graders that have been at Mark Twain before. It's going to be an orientation day where the teachers are going to begin contacting families starting on Wednesday of this week to set up some times to either meet with families that are in those classrooms in small groups or to meet with families individually. And the goals for those meetings, that orientation day is going to be to make sure that you can get online. Uh, once you get your iPad for your students, you're going to have instructions on how to log them in. We are actually using a QR code system. So your child is going to get, oh, this is actually a good reminder. Please make sure you guys, uh, remember this. Your child is going to get a QR code card. It's about the size of a credit card. And on that QR code, they're going to have information. Now that potentially we're sending it to you laminated, but potentially can get lost. It can get damaged. Um, and so when you get that card, one great idea is going to be to take a snapshot with your phone. Because I believe when you do use the QR, uh, feature on the iPad, whether it's on paper or on your phone, it'll still be able to log the child in. So because we have young students, we use the QR system. So students are spending a bunch of time typing in a long email address and typing in a password. They actually just hold their iPad up. They're, they're very good at it. They're hold their iPad up. They take a picture with their QR code and it logs them right into their canvas page. And then from there, there's going to be a button that says learn or video meet. And they're going to click that button, whether it's a live synchronous time or it's a learn time and need to go to their curriculum. When they click their learn button, it's going to take them to their landing page for the curriculum. And they're just going to choose whatever subject they're going to start with. It'll say reading or language arts or math or science. And they'll click the button and it'll take them to their starting point. Or if they paused and they left, it'll take them back to the point where they paused it. So the goal for us is as few clicks as possible and as simple as possible for the students to get where they need to, need to be. So part of orientation is making sure that families can get on, that there's some clear instructions on how to start. We can get to a, um, a meeting, uh, a Google meeting. And, and we're ready to kind of begin communicating and kind of begin school virtually. That's really the goal of orientation. Um, teachers will talk about your child's, uh, learning environment. Do they have a desk? Are they at the kitchen table? Do they have, you know, are they at the coffee table? Uh, what do their supplies look like? Just making sure that the student has everything they need. And there's a clear understanding of kind of what the expectation is to, uh, to, uh, to begin life in this virtual, uh, school world. So that, that would be the goal of logging on for that first day. After we get going, is the school going to revisit, have its students getting instruction four days a week instead of two days a weeks? So the date to revisit, so the question was basically, when are we going to start having some in-person learning? And the date that we are going to revisit, when we can go to hybrid is October 5th. So it's coming up pretty quick and the district is going to make a decision if we continue an online learning or if it's safe enough to go into a hybrid, which our hybrid model is simply half capacity. So half of the classroom goes on a Tuesday, Thursday, the other half of the classroom goes on a Wednesday, Friday. Um, in terms of additional days, students may come in, in additional days. But let me kind of paint this picture for you. It, it, let's say we're in hybrid and students are coming two days a week. A typical student is coming two days a week. They come on a Tuesday, Thursday. If that student is showing that they are having difficulty keeping up. Or for example, maybe that student is in a situation where they're getting some sort of special service. It could be an English language development class. It could be special education service. That student, based on their needs, potentially could come in on the days when they're not in hybrid, like a Tuesday, Thursday kiddo that comes normally. They would come also possibly on a Wednesday or a Wednesday and a Friday. They would not be in the classroom wing. Due to contact tracing, they would not cross paths with any of the other students. We would basically set up a school within a school and they would receive, receive their extra services in a separate portion of the school and not cross paths. So additional days beyond two, once we get going, depends on the needs of the students. So I hope I answered that question. One question down here too is during the live instructions, though it's only fifteen minute sections, will there be opportunities for interaction with the kids? Yes, there absolutely will be interactions with the kids. Um, in fact, the ones that I was involved in during the spring, that I thought the kids did an amazing job in, in the classrooms. Um, they were able to manage their iPads. They were able to ask questions. Um, they do a great job with, with, uh, non-verbal gestures. So whether it's a thumbs up or a thumbs down or a, or a thumb sideways, there's a number of non-verbal gestures that I think the students do a great job with. So yes, there will be time for interaction, both student to student as well as student to teacher. Uh, how often will the workbooks be checked? Another great question. So anytime the students are given, um, an assignment or an activity where they're writing or they're drawing or they're doing something in their workbook, there is a, there is an option for students to be able to turn in, quote unquote, virtually turn in work. That doesn't have to happen where they bring it into the school. They have their iPads and so there's going to be a feature where they simply push a button and it goes to camera mode and they take a picture and then another button uploads it and sends it to the teacher or posts it so that the teacher can see it. So everything in terms of turning an assignment in, quote unquote, will simply be a picture. And, uh, and, and we're in a great situation because of the iPads, it's going to be an easy process. But there's also a number of other ways that, um, that we can accept homework too. For example, you could take a paper and you could scan it and you can email it to your teacher. You could take a picture with your phone and you could send it to the teacher. Um, there'd be a number of ways to turn homework in. Oh, clarifying. Thanks Karen for clarifying on, uh, four days. I, I, um, I don't know that, that decision's going to happen a little further up than myself. And it's also going to depend on, on, on what the restrictions are in terms of number of students in the building and when it's safe to start bringing students in for more than, more than their, their hybrid or half capacity days. So as we get going, we'll have more information on that. Um, and, and we're really just going to kind of follow the guidelines that are, that are set in place for number of students that we can have, uh, in the schools. Um, let's see here. So we've covered schedules. We've covered checkout day. We've talked a little bit about pictures. Please make sure you visit our website. I put, uh, a number of posts on there today. Um, I've actually posted three or four things and then found out the website wasn't working and so I had to repost them. But I have checked them and they are there today. So please make sure you check those out. Any, any other questions? Even from students? Do we have any? Laney, what's your question or Penny, what's your question? What do you got for me Penny?
Ask it again.
When is it picture day?
When is it picture day? You know what? I'm going to do Penny. Here's what I'm going to do so that your mom can watch this too. I'm going to share my screen so you can see what I'm seeing. Mark Twain webpage, is it there Stacy?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, pictures, pictures, pictures. Did I not say? Did that come in a? Do, parents, do you remember, did I send that in a parent square or was it, did I say I was going to post it?
Greg, it was sent out in parent square. I'm not sure if it's on the website.
I don't think it is. Shoot. Okay, picture day. I'm going from memory now Penny. Are you ready? Picture day is on October 6th. October 6th. And what we're going to do, what we're going to do is we are going to have a time, I want to say I'm going from memory here. So I want to say we're going to go kindergartners like at two o'clock and you're going to drive up in your car, you're going to get out in your beautiful dress. You're going to smile big. Give me a big smile Penny. There it is. And they're going to take your picture. You get back in your car and you go back home. And then first grade will be at about three o'clock. And then second grade will be at four o'clock. And then we'll have an open time for any families that, uh, those timeframes didn't work for them at five o'clock. And we'll probably have a couple of stations to kind of try to move that through really quickly. If we have issues with weather, we will probably try to do that on the, on the gymnasium side of the building. And, um, um, and probably let kids come inside if we have any weather. So we've got a couple of options there. We'll try to make that work, but that's kind of what picture day will look like. Should have packets later this week or early next week coming in the mail. Great question Penny. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, you're welcome. Let's see, what are the different state COVID guidelines for K through three? So thanks for the question Josh. There are, there are some possibilities. There are, there are some possibilities in terms of what is allowable for the K three grades. I think one of the things though is I am getting the sense that our leaders are erring on the side of caution. I mean, we're trying to be a little bit more conservative. There were a number of stories in the news early on of schools that tried to allow kids to come back in person. And students as young as like first and second grade were, were testing positive. And, and I think, I think in some of the discussions at least that I've been involved in, I think some of the challenge there is the fact that you know, is it, is it devastating for a kiddo? Is this, is it a serious, uh, um, you know, are, are they going to experience serious symptoms? Is there a risk there? Maybe for the younger kids, it's, it's less likely. But the potential for young kids then to pass it on to, uh, to family members or folks who are in maybe some, uh, at-risk populations, whether it's by age or, um, a pre-existing medical conditions and things like that. And so I think there's just so much unknown that at least in our district and at least in our area, we're going to, we're going to really try to err on the side of caution when it comes to like bringing students into the school. Um, the first population, when we do start moving that direction, the first population of students that are going to come in are the high need students. Um, students who are receiving special ed services, um, students who have some additional needs that, that, uh, like a five oh four, for example, or things like that. Um, English second language students, we're going to, we're going to really try to, try to support those highest need students first. And that will be one indicator that we may be a little bit closer to having, uh, a hybrid model or potentially having students come for more than a couple of days. I hope that answers your question. Um, let's see, any, any other questions maybe that I haven't covered or a topic that you want me to discuss? Those are great questions. I appreciate those coming. Students, I'm, I'm open for questions. Where's Laney's question? Or, or, uh, where's, um, where's Ms. Wold at? Harper, where's your question? Come on Harper, you can do it, take the mute off. How about Emmett, do you have a question for me Emmett? Or Jaden?
Sorry, Emmett is currently grounded and going to bed early this evening.
Nice, nice. I like it. Tough love, tough love in that house.
I think Jaden went outside, sorry.
I'm, I'm too long-winded, I'm talking too much. I had my five-minute window and that was it.
Daddy came home, so time to play.
Nice, nice, good for him. How about Cadence? Emily? Cadence want to chat?
Wait, ready? Go again.
What do you do at recess?
What do you do at recess? Like in, or do you mean like in a normal school year? Like if we had normal school and we were at school, what do we do at recess? Or what do you do at recess now?
Now.
You're going to have to be really creative. You're going to have to, um, maybe go outside. If you have a little, a little trampoline, you could jump on your trampoline. You could do some jumping jacks, you could shoot some baskets.
Help your parents clean.
Yeah. We could, you could jump rope. Could kick a soccer ball. Maybe there's your dad does in the fall that you could join him with.
What is daddy going to do?
For hunting?
Got it girl. All right, where does he go? I, I need to know exactly where he goes. Take a picture.
It's a secret Penny.
Secret.
We don't share that. Let's see. Who else is on here? I gotta start, I'm going to have to start cold calling some students here. Let's see. I didn't, I didn't hear from heard from a few. Quiet low, what will happen to children when we're in the middle of? Uh-oh, that one, I lost that one real quick. What will happen to children when we're in the middle of being evaluated for speed? Yeah, that's, so, um, when we get, so for, for some of you families that experienced either A, receiving services from special ed or B, we're in an evaluation, um, please make sure that you communicate directly with your case manager. You should be hearing from your case manager to set up meetings. We are going to have those meetings. We are going to, uh, continue with the evaluation. There is the process in place for that. Um, and so please make sure if you do not hear anything, once we get started and you've heard from your regular classroom teacher, communicate with your case manager in our building, that's Christine Thornton. Communicate directly with her and we will have a plan in place for either services or, um, completing the special ed evaluation. That's a great, thank you so much for asking that. Jed, you got any good questions? Or are you just a fill-in?
I am just a fill-in, I have no good questions. And yes, I hunt in a secret spot. That is all.
All right. Creighton, does, does Cadence have a question for me? All right. Well, uh, oh, no. I saw you shaking your head, are you sure? Ah, now we ducked out of the picture. There she's back, I like the smile though. Are you like a maybe you'll ask a question? No, we're right here, no question. All right. Um, I'll go ahead and, uh, I'll go ahead and kind of close the meeting, I'll allow folks to log on. If you have a question or I'll stay on until everybody's gone. So if you have a question you'd like to ask me, please feel free to do so. If you, uh, don't want to ask it here or something comes to mind after we're done, please feel free to email me, call the office. Um, I, I do want to, I do want to kind of make sure that you guys have an understanding for our building, kind of behind the scenes a little bit. It's, it, it has been a real challenge to figure out the best way to do this. And I would probably admit that we probably don't know what the best way to do this is yet. I think we're really trying to get a starting point. Start off with, you know, a basic schedule, start off with getting to know the students, start off with starting the curriculum. And then from there, I think the task this year is just going to be to be very responsive, to make sure that we are monitoring students' weekly attendance, progress, all of those things. If there are challenges that are coming up, if there's things that you're experiencing at home that you're having a really difficult time for, we, we are here to problem solve that with you. I don't know what those are going to be. I don't think anybody can foresee some of those things. Uh, but so much has happened, it's been out of our control. We just want you to know that we're here to support you and this, and this is going to be, um, you know, this, we're going to make this year the best that we can. And, and at some point, we're going to come out of this and we're going to get back to normal. Um, and, uh, and we're looking forward to that. But in the meantime, we are, we're ready to support you as best as we can. Okay, so thank you so much, you guys can log off. I will make sure that this recording is posted. And, um, if you would like to stay on and ask me a question directly, please feel free to do so. Okay? Thank you so much, everybody, appreciate it. Have a great evening. And I look forward to seeing you guys at, uh, at Meet Your Teacher Night.